So we'll, we'll assume that Jason from Waste Management is gonna get on here in a minute, but I think we can go ahead and get started. You're on mute, Brian.
So that's why you didn't answer me when I said, Jim, do you want to get started? Um, okay, yeah, I, I think we can get started. We have our board members here, I think. Is anyone from the city here? We have Melissa.
Melissa's on.
Hi there, just me today.
Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order at 1:04. This is a special meeting of the Topeka County Solid Waste Committee. So this is a special meeting we do. So Jim, I see that we have Assembly Bill thirty-one or three sixty-one and the public forum on there. Do you want to go ahead and do this?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do those first and then we'll do some introductions after.
Well, we, yeah, let's do the Assembly Bill first. Now, we have, we only have to do that once a month and we did it at the last solid waste to do, you need to do it again? Was my question.
We're doing, we're doing a reauthorization which occurs if we meet within that thirty day period. So this is required. This record monthly, yeah. It says it's on the agenda, I would just advise moving forward with it today.
Yeah, okay. So, because we, we did do that at the last meeting, so we're, we're within the thirty day, we're not outside of the thirty day period. But, but it is on the agenda, so.
But do we, do we need to take a, a roll call to establish forum?
I think we do have forum, I've, I've done that.
Okay, so is there any comment on the Assembly Bill? Okay, if no comment, any public comments? If not, we'll bring it back to the committee and I'll look for a motion. To approve. Okay. Motion from Mr. Latori, any, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Latori, second from, I guess we should be. Ye- yes, do you have a public comment on the the item on the agenda right now? We're, we're talking about AB three six one? What, what's your comment, sir?
My comment could be on the Waste Management Calcera contract renewal.
That, that's on the agenda, but we're not to that yet. So. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Could you call for the vote, Jim?
Uh, yes, Supervisor Campbell.
Hi.
Supervisor Goldenberg.
Hi.
Member Holcomb.
I'm.
Member Latori.
I.
Okay, motion carries four zero with one absent. Okay, now we are on to, we're on the public forum, which also during special meetings, we don't usually have a public forum. But it is on the agenda, so we'll, we'll do it. This is a time for anyone that's, that's joining us that has a, a comment on anything that's not on the agenda. So if you are here for the Calcera Waste Management contracts, that, that is an action item, so we will be discussing that. But if you have any comments on any Waste Management business or any solid waste business that's not reflected on the agenda, now would be the time for that. So do I see any public comments on anything not on the agenda?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a comment, sir.
Go ahead. Yep.
Sure, I'm gonna talk about the contract renewal, but what's not on the agenda are the violations and my complaints that were brought to the Solid Waste Department that should be addressed before the contract is renewed, because we've got major problems and breaches of contract.
Okay, so, sir, sir, I am sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you there.
I haven't even heard my statement.
That is, what you're talking, what I've heard so far is related to the contract?
Who are you?
About Waste Management and the contract. And so I'm gonna ask you to hold those comments until we get to that portion. The reason we do that is that if anybody is wanting to join in, that they will be here to hear what you have to say.
Go, go ahead, you know.
All right. If there, if there isn't any comments that's not related to the contract or anything that's on the agenda, I'll look to see if anybody else has hands up.
None in the room.
Okay, I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and move on. The next item is the Committee Business. So do you, you want to approve the minutes?
That's right, we need consideration of the minutes, August tenth, twenty twenty-two, please.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to accept them.
Okay, we have a motion, is there any comments, corrections? Additions, abstractions? Okay, if there. If, if there's no comment, I'll bring it back and we have a motion by Committee Member Holcomb, and then I think I heard a second by Committee Member Latori first. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Jim, will you please do the roll?
Yes, Supervisor Campbell.
Hi.
Supervisor Goldenberg.
Hi.
And Member Holcomb.
I.
Member Latori.
I.
Okay, motion carries four zero with one absent. Okay, and sorry everyone for the officiousness of the way this works, but it's, it's an effort to be fair and make sure that we're recording every, everyone's comments fairly and equally, so. So you do have an action item, and Jim, would you like to start us off on that?
Uh, yeah, I'll go ahead and read it, it's consideration and recommended approval of the Calcera Waste Management Incorporated Waste Transfer Station Franchise Agreement Ten Year Extension. And in your packet, there's a sheet that I put together from, from last time, you saw this last time, and we discussed this last time, the difference being that we didn't have the the final draft document ready to be provided for the last meeting. So we were required to have this special meeting and have the, the transfer station agreement attached to this agenda, which it is. But I just wanted to go down the the seven items on this list, if I can. And the first one is the term. The current agreement allows for a ten year term extension. Calcera Waste Management has requested a ten year term extension. And we are supporting that because at the county, we feel that it makes the most sense to have both agreements synced up as far as their terms. The, the collection agreement for Calcera Waste Management has a ten year extension term that's already been approved and recommended by this committee. And so it makes sense to have those agreements, their terms match up, because at the end of the ten year term, it gives the county the most flexibility and, and ability if there was a desire to go out to bid, say, or entertain other providers, that would be possible with the terms synced up and terminating at the same time. So the term is is the first one, the second one is the rate adjustments, and in the payment section, it's been changed to mirror the language in the Waste Collection Agreement, which has the CPI, which was the standard Consumer Price Index for all items, all urban consumers. That's being changed to the Water Sewer Trash, which is essentially a waste industry specific CPI. And then also there's an addition of an extraordinary adjustment included. These items were in the Waste Collection Agreement that's already been approved by this committee. And it does make sense to include them in this agreement as well. So the third item is.
Jim, if, if I can interrupt, please. So the, these items that you're going over are, are part of the agenda. Perhaps it would be useful to bring them up and, and share them as we're discussing, just so people can see as you're stepping through.
Absolutely.
I, I know they're part of the agenda, I can see them, so. That, that would be appreciated.
Okay. I had to close my computer earlier because it was getting a weird interference.
Okay.
Give me just a second.
Sure.
So I, I got another meeting invite from you. Jim, is that?
Another, no, yeah, don't go to that.
Must keep popping up on him, I don't know, something screwy with, with that.
Yeah, so that's why I had shut this down, but yeah, don't go to that one. Okay, are you able to see my screen now?
Uh, not coming up yet, Jim. I just wanted to ensure that, you know, everybody participating, including members of the public. Clearly see that and step through.
Are you able to see it yet? No? For some reason, it's not letting me do it. Yeah, it kind of takes me into a stop, it says I'll share.
Do you need a connected cable?
Use that down. Use that down, I can just. So it's, it's not letting me do it. If David, are you able to share, or Ryan?
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if I can.
Or maybe Amy?
I'm just looking to download it. Because unless I download it, I can't. Share.
Jim, I mean, it, it appears I'm able to share.
Go ahead, please.
Okay.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Is it working?
I haven't seen it yet.
So Jim, you need to make Vanessa a presenter or?
Now, which, okay, so.
Okay, so go down to that list, if you would.
Yeah, please. And, and sorry for the confusion, I just wanted to make sure that everybody could clearly see what we were talking about.
Okay, so then, perfect, we got. So there's number one, the term, and number two, the rate adjustments. And again, this is the list we went over last time, I just wanted to touch on, on it quickly. The third item is insurance, and our insurance section in the new agreement has been updated to the standard county insurance requirements. The fourth item is recycling, and this gets to the need to, to make sure customers are aware that, that they can dispose of the recycling at no cost at the recycling buyback center. And that could save them on their waste disposal costs, so there'll be signage put up at the Waste Transfer Station informing customers that they can potentially reduce their disposal costs by taking recycling to the recycle center. And then number number four is, excuse me, number five is cooperation with county on annual household hazardous waste collection event at the Sonora Transfer Station, provision of no cost HHW waste disposal, excuse me, non HHW waste disposal. The sixth item is green waste, and we're very happy about this, because this is gonna include four annual green waste dollar drop off days. And that says at the Sonora Transfer Station, but it's actually the Earth Resources Facility, so that'll be changed. It, it says it correctly in the, the agreement. But it needs to be changed on here. And then the last item is treated wood waste. Will be accepted at the Sonora Transfer Station with no additional special fee or charge. So again, these are the items we, we went over last time in discussing the draft agreement, and thank you, Amy, Amy's pointed out that the HHW will also be at the recycling center. These, these went, we went over these last time and be happy to ask, answer any questions.
I'm good, Jim, and, and I appreciate you, you know, bringing those up so we could, you know, visually see them as well as discuss them, and I'm I'm appreciative of the efforts and, you know, moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee, and if not, we'll go to public comment? I'm, I'm having trouble pulling up any questions from John or Monique?
No.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we'll, we'll go ahead and open up to public comment. So, Mr. Robin, I think you wanted to speak before this, this is your opportunity, and apologies for having to cut you off earlier.
Yeah, thank you, I sent Jim, the Director of Solid Waste, a bunch of evidence of wrongdoing. I was a former employee at Waste Management at the Calcera Transfer Station and up here in Pinecrest. At the transfer station, I was the Scale House attendant. And I brought to the attention of the Waste Management, management of overpricing the customers who are bringing in hazardous household waste, things like TV sets and paint, oil, stuff like that, that is free, and same with the recycle, and the customers are being charged for that. We were told as employees to not accept hazardous household waste and to make the customer go around and wait in line again, which could be up to an hour sometimes, you know, a gallon of gas and hundred plus degree temperature weather. So there was a big problem, because these customers made a good point that they paid their fifty dollars or whatever to drop off their, their trash, right? And they're being told that they can't, so that was collecting money and not accepting their goods. And they were also charging customers for the price of a refrigerator, which is a Freon based appliance, which is one of the most expensive things you can dump for non-Freon based appliances, so things like swamp coolers and stuff like that, okay? That came up, and I actually walked up to the management up in the Scale House and brought it to their attention, and they still charge a customer, so. I witnessed this, I put a sworn statement, I'll swear under the penalty of perjury right now, that this statement is true, and that the, that there is fraud, racketeering, and unlawful conduct being committed at the Calcera Transfer Station with Waste Management. And I was fired because I am a whistleblower, I brought that to their attention, it's well documented, everything went to gym. They're making us drive unsafe equipment, unregistered vehicles, they made me drive an unregistered vehicle truck from Sonora to Pinecrest and back in the middle of winter. Some of these vehicles weren't even four L drive, they don't include studded tires. That's because they refused to pay me my mileage reimbursement on my Subaru Outback, and I lived up here, and they made me drive all the way to and pick up a truck that had no registration, no emergency brake. And then they had me driving equipment in Pinecrest with hydraulic problems. And it was all very unsafe, and it was reported, and I did the right things, and you know, it's just a very shady company, and I, I want the residents to be reimbursed, the taxpayers and voters of Topeka County for the years of being ripped off by this corporation. And, you know, Waste Management is no stranger to corporate scandals, it's the second largest corporate scandal in America, second to Enron. And they use the same corporate book counting to inflate the value of their business by thirty percent. And that's what they're doing now, they're charging the customers more than they should to throw out stuff like recyclables, cardboard, you know, glass, aluminum, that type of stuff, right? And now they're trying to say, well, they can just drive a couple miles down the street to the pay, the buyback center to drop off their recyclables, well, they shouldn't be charged anyhow, I mean, if they're not gonna get paid back at the transfer station, they shouldn't be charged for dropping off stuff that should be free. And I refused, under the Labor Code, to participate in any kind of fraud or racketeering or theft, and and that's what's going on, they're also not giving the senior citizens discounts, you know? I've had complaints about that, you know, because I've gone out to the community and we're discussing doing a, a big protest. And I'm not sure if it's gonna be in front of the, the dump at the transfer station on your way, or if it's gonna be downtown Sonora. Because at this point, it looks like it's a cover up with Topeka County, I've gone and presented this information to Jim over at the Solid Waste. And I haven't heard back, he hasn't produced the records, I've done California Public Records request, and I haven't heard anything. So now he's suggesting and that the Board of Supervisors approved this contract, this is complete, completely unacceptable, Jim, you were notified of the unlawful conduct, there's proof. And you're not even giving up the public records, so the taxpayers and the voters and the citizens of this community, of this county, want to see that, we want transparency, we know we've been ripped off. Customers are very unhappy about their trash pickups up here on the upper one oh eight corridor, you know, they, they there are numerous complaints, the other thing that they had is a recycle thing, that's six foot tall container that the, they expect people to, you know, put their recyclables in without any kind of stairway up here in Pinecrest, and then they, they have a ramp which makes it easier, but they don't allow the customers to use the ramp, and then they can go on the north facing slope, which is where the ice is in the winter to try to reach over six feet, I can't barely do that, to throw their recyclables into this container, while you're putting the customer at risk of a slip and fall. And, you know, all this stuff is brought up to Jim. Garcia, who's the district manager over here in Sonora, and he didn't want to hear it. And he wound up firing me, and he had a big meeting in front of all the employees and told the employees that his job was to pay us the least and get the most out of us, even though he thought our job was to do the least and, and get paid the most. And, you know, it's ridiculous, all the employees are upset over there, people are fighting with each other. It's a very unsafe environment, the equipment's unsafe, it's not maintained, the mechanics, you know, they didn't treat the equipment properly up in Pinecrest, the skid steer which we use for snow removal. So in addition to the hydraulic failure that they knew about, and I continued to operate the machinery regardless of that, and I took pictures of the, all the problems with the hydraulic failures and whatnot, had to call, and people had to come up and take care of this equipment, because I couldn't get the engine turned off. Well, they, they didn't add an oil additive to the diesel, and they couldn't start the skid steers, they couldn't remove the snow, and therefore the, the transfer station couldn't open, right? So we're here to open up this transfer station, I was dedicated to do the job, I live up here, right, and I want to support the people of this community and the businesses. And I can't even open up the, the transfer station because of this dereliction of duty to maintain the equipment, and it just went on and on and on, and there's a whole list, and it was brought up to Jim. And the state of California found fault, I emailed that to you, I've emailed all the board supervisors, the the evidence and whatnot, so I hope you look at that. And there's no way, because if you do renew this contract, and I sent a picture, I got the world's largest crime scene tape, we're gonna be downtown. And we're gonna be protesting the Board of Supervisors. And anybody, because this is complete racketeering and fraud, you know that this is going on, and there's been a cover up, a failure to investigate and produce the results, maybe there is an investigation, I want to see the results, the people of this county do want to see the results. The Union Democrat, the editor of the Union Democrat, have been in contact with him, and we're waiting to get the results that everyone is hiding. I've sworn in this meeting, under oath, under the penalty of perjury, what I'm saying is the truth. And until it's proven otherwise, it is the truth. So we have a major problem here. And if I need to do it myself, I will go file a class action lawsuit and sue Calcera and Waste Management on behalf of the the residents of this community who have been ripped off for the past, I don't know, ten years, and now you want to do it again for the next ten years, it's not gonna happen. All right, so that's my public comment, I want that on the record, I'll be back on the sixth, and I'll be sending emails out, being in contact personally, reaching out to each one of the Board of Supervisors. This contract cannot be renewed, again, Waste Management is the second largest corporate scandal in America, you can Google that, you can look at my email, and here they are again. And this is a much bigger problem than just Topeka County, because Waste Management being the largest garbage, you know, transfer disposal company in the country, in the world, it's far reaching, so it's, it's it's all bad, and you can't renew the contract, and if you do, it's, it's gonna be all bad, so that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to, from the, the public, I see actually, I don't think, yeah, I see a few other names here. Would anyone else like to comment on on this item? And I guess raise your hand if you would. That would help me organize things a bit. Okay, give it a second, I see no hands raised. Do you have anybody in the room there, Jim, that would like to speak?
Nobody in the room.
Okay, all right. Oh, I'm sorry, I do see Brad has his hand up, so, Brad. Okay, Brad, go ahead.
Supervisor Campbell, I wanted to make sure the public had a chance to fulfill any comments they have before I responded.
I, I don't see any other public comments, so go ahead.
So first off, want to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak today. You know, it's disconcerting and unfortunate that after many months of hard work and collaboration, and a strong partnership between WM and the county, that a new deal is being distracted by unfounded claims and rhetoric that has nothing to do with the negotiation. All claims from this previous employee were investigated, found meritless when he was both an employee and after he was an employee. I understand that in the court of public opinion, that facts supporting the claims isn't always necessary, because as stated in my letter to the Board of Supervisors yesterday, we do not deviate from our core commitment of success with integrity. I'm happy to speak with any committee member, Board of Supervisor that would like to discuss any further of these allegations, but do not do so in this environment, it's not the correct form to have those discussions. These discussions, which allow for public comment, should focus on the merits of the contract and not meritless claims. I do want to address a claim that was received this morning by the Board of Supervisors. In that email, there was a claim during a recent Waymaster inspection completed by the state in Topeka County, the violations were identified and sent for compliance. The email intimates that these violations somehow back up any claims that were made. These two violations, we're not having the permit displayed in the Scale House and not having a sticker display at the Scale, the Scale House. Both of those violations were resolved immediately. I thank the committee, the board, the businesses, the residents of Topeka County. I thank Jim, Cody and Kim for their support and their partnership, and we look forward to the approval on nine six. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else, uh anyone on the committee that would like to speak? Uh have any additional comments or questions? Okay, I I I'm having a hard time seeing you guys are about this big on my screen, so I don't see any hands raised, though. Um yeah, I I would just say, you know, the I I think the the logic of of where we were at the last several meetings uh is still holds true for me and and you know, given I I think uh Waste Management's done uh a good job being willing to make changes when we ask for them and when there are areas where we have run into problems negotiating the contract. Uh I think that that there was some communication there, and so I I appreciate that. So I'd be supportive of continuing. Um if there's no other comment, then I'd look for him. Oh, I'm sorry, Monique, give her a hand up.
I do. Um I have a couple of of hopefully quick questions about this. I'd like to know when this was reported to Solid Waste. I would like to know if this is an individual or multiple people. And if it was, why it wasn't brought to the committee? Or is that even appropriate to do?
A lot of acts. So so these complaints were received uh July eighth. Um only one. And then just just from Mr. Robin. I was understanding that uh Jim McCarty spoke in length uh with Mr. Robin about his allegations, his complaints, his concerns. You know, moving uh I I do want to agree with with um Brad at Waste Management that the the agenda item here is about the contract. It's not to discuss these allegations. But to the extent that they are relevant to the committee's recommendation regarding the contract, I I can't address some of the the issues. I can't go into detail about any investigation that's ongoing, just to protect the integrity of the investigation. Um the description of the the violations that were found by the Waymaster um being relatively minor and have having been corrected on the spot are accurate. Um they're not connected to the allegations Mr. Robin made. Moving specifically to the the contract, there is a provision of the contract that requires Waste Management to comply with all applicable laws and regulations. That's in the existing contract. It's in the proposed contract. Any violation of those laws would be a breach of the contract. It would be grounds for terminating the contract. Um you know, the county takes all complaints and uh allegations seriously and and has, you know, taken appropriate responsive action. Um and will continue to do that. Um but we have not, at this point, found any evidence to corroborate any of Mr. Robin's uh allegations. As I said, we're we will continue to to respond appropriately, can consider any um complaints uh moving forward, but it's it's a to be expected that there will be allegations, will be complaints, um will be at times violations um that hopefully can be addressed and corrected quickly. Uh it's kind of the nature of the industry. But we we take the allegation seriously, uh take the complaint seriously. We just have found no merit at this point uh to those allegations and didn't find any based on that, um didn't find any reason for that to change staff's recommendation to approve uh this contract. I also did want to address that Mr. Robin did submit a public records act request. Um that has been forwarded to um my office for response. We provided initial response to Mr. Robin. Um and I'm continuing to review that request and we'll re- re- providing the responsive records as they become available.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, Jim. I I don't know if we I can't remember. I I thought we did discuss some of the the that there were these accusations. I'm not sure if we did it in the board meeting or if it was after the the emails, the first email came in. Um did we discuss that here?
We did not discuss it at the um the committee.
Okay, cause I I remember, I I guess maybe you and I were were meeting about the agenda and and maybe we discussed it, but yeah, I mean, to me, it's kind of like we're looking at whether what's in the contract is um what we want to see for our county. Uh obviously, if there are um accu- accusations that that carry merit with them, um that can weigh on whether or not a contract is approved or not. Um but you know, I don't, I don't see that it rises to that level with this. I'm I'm more looking at at what's in the contract, how it's worded, what the responsibilities of Waste Management are, what the responsibilities of the ratepayers are. So the the those are kind of more at the forefront than you know, I I kind of like Cody said, I I I expect that there will be people that will won't be happy with some things that the county does or some things that Waste Management do, that that's pretty typical. Um but uh you know, we do need to have some kind of a contract in place to keep continuing on with these services. Um and in my mind, what what we have come up with is is far better than where we were um in the past ten years.
Can I make a comment?
But the uh Uh we have closed public comments um for this, so I want to make sure that uh any committee members would like to say, get the opportunity. Uh John, you have your hand up.
Get the opportunity. I'm being denied my first amendment right.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. Uh I'm inclined to ask Mr. Robin one or two questions. Would that be inappropriate?
Yeah, I think you can ask a question, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Robin, I don't know if you can see me. I'm at the back of the room waving my hand.
I can see you, sir. What's your name?
Uh my name is John Latory and I'm a member of this committee. I was uh recently appointed, so all this work that we're doing is fairly new to me. I'm certainly no expert. I'm a carpenter, okay? So I don't know about all the legal stuff. But I can see that the the concerns that you have about the company are are really important to you. And I want to make sure of of two things. One, um I hope that you can leave this meeting in that you were heard because you were not, you were allowed to speak. I believe that everyone here heard what you had to say. Uh you have the feeling that you were heard today, sir?
Well, I haven't gotten a chance to follow up. It seems that the whole thrust and the reason I'm taking my time to talk to you folks is that this is a cover up. I've come and I've stated again, and I'll state it right now, under the penalty.
If I could just interrupt you, Mr. Robin.
This is evidence. A crime in the community, it's not gonna be tolerated.
Mr. Robin, I was actually asking a yes or no question, not not asking you to state your uh ideas again, but just asking if you felt heard with what you said already.
At the beginning, I was heard. Comments were made to uh by by the gentleman on the right in the suit, and I think that's Jim in the glasses and the blue shirt. That my uh allegations are unsubstantiated or they invest, there was no investigation. So I'm going to the public. I'm putting myself to to the members of this community. I'm from this community. My grandfather was from here. We're not letting this happen to Tuolumne County people. I don't care who you are. We're not gonna let you continue ripping off the residents of this county Waste Management. All right, that Brad, look, it happened. They can't prove it didn't happen and they're covering it up.
Sure. Mister, hold on. Mister Robin, sir, that that actually brings me to my second question.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm I'm new to this. I don't know everything that's going on, but I'm curious if you have a lawyer assisting you with the process.
Well, right, the first stage in the process is to come to the government, which I'm I'm it's uh due diligence. I've come and presented my uh uh issues to uh to the uh solid waste and to the weights and measurements departments with the county and the state. And I expected to get some feedback. Everybody was welcome to accept my information and the evidence. And then it just looks like they they covered it up and now they're not producing the findings and the results.
And my question is, do you have a lawyer?
Well, we're, uh there's not a lawsuit right now. Uh but like I mentioned earlier, there will be a potential class action lawsuit because there's enough evidence, okay? There's there's plenty of everybody in this county that's been through the dump knows. I mean, come on, you know, so it's a small community here and I'm affiliated with a lot of people that that know the the what's been going on, right? And former employees, this is ridiculous. There has been no investigation. Did they talk to anybody? No. Did they look at any of the video? No, I have I have just overwhelming evidence. And here you are gonna renew a contract with the company that's been taking advantage of.
Okay, thank you, sir. I I have no further questions.
Okay.
Okay, um alright, if there's no um are there any other comments from committee or or questions for Jim or otherwise I'll look for a motion and and just to remind everybody, this is not the final say on this. This is basically a recommendation of the committee uh to put this forward to the Board of Supervisors, who ultimately has the uh final authority to approve the contract.
So I, a couple of comments.
Thank you, uh Chair Campbell. I have one question. On the same page that we were viewing on the screen with the seven changes. Uh the last one, number seven, is about treated wood waste. And I see that there's a proposal that treated wood waste uh will be accepted with no special fee or charge. And I believe that that's included in this committee's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Is that right?
That's right.
And and my question is, on this particular item, have we had any feedback from Waste Management about this idea or this request?
And I'm sorry, John, you you said where it was, but I I'm trying to find it. Uh some reason I can't seem to search this. Wha- wha- what section was that?
It's the page that uh Ms. Barbaris uh managed to put up on our screen for us.
Okay.
Seven.
Item seven.
Uh uh I got it. I got it. Thank you.
And I can address that question if you'd like. I mean, all of these contract provisions and terms have been discussed with Waste Management. We've been in extension, extensive conversations and negotiations. So these are all terms that have been tentatively approved by this management uh based on our negotiations.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah. Don't talk to you on the details. Thanks.
I think this is the first time that we've
This is the, yeah, the first time.
Right.
Entire draft has been, has been presented.
So I, I had a couple of comments if I might uh You know, one, we've we've been discussing this contract uh for some time. As with any contract, uh there's there's always back and forth, uh you know, where we discuss, you know, different items and desires, uh you know, whether it be what the county is looking for. Uh what, in this case, Waste Management to is willing to provide or not uh as as part of a contract. I and and we've had many discussions and, you know, there's two items in here that uh, you know, both uh really speak to me. Um you know, uh number six of that same list that we were just looking at the green waste. You know, so I, my roles as a as a county supervisor, you know, serving on this solid waste committee, uh but also as the chair of the fire safety advisory committee. And so having these uh, you know, annual, four annual green waste drop offs uh you know, to to help reduce falling, you know, fire threat by getting rid of, you know, that vegetation. And so I'm I'm very much in favor of that being a part of this and appreciative of of Waste Management including that. And uh committee member uh Latory just spoke with the, you know, regarding the treated wood waste. I I know this has been a uh the thorn in the side of the our local contractors and, you know, wanting to get rid of stuff, uh you know, and and do their part. And and in the past, we didn't necessarily have the best way to go about that. In 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 some cases, quite honestly, by having it be restrictive, it was encouraging them to do things that we really don't want to see, like burning those materials, right, to get rid of them. So um I'm appreciative of, you know, that being, uh you know, officially part of the contract as well. And with that, without any other comments, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
I want to have one more question about this.
Alright, I have another question in the room.
Sorry, I I wanted to give Committee Member Holcomb. I could tell by your face that you had a.
Thanks. So as you, I'm sure all know by now, that um the the green waste is like my my hotspot with this contract, but it looks to me like section A, item fifteen. We won't just have the ability to have those four days here, but that we actually can drop off green waste to be processed at Earth Resources. Is that correct? So at any point, we can drop those off as residents?
Uh the those are existing um directly to uh
It is page seven or towards the bottom.
There's a cost, though, I think is the the difference, right?
Yeah, it that doesn't, yeah, number fifteen doesn't.
So that's except for a fee.
Right.
And and do we know what that's?
That's carried through from the existing agreement.
Okay, do do you don't happen to know what the fee is right now, do you?
Um I'm sure Jim uh Garcia may be able to speak to that.
Uh current rate is seven dollars per yard.
Seven per yard, okay.
I I think we can go a long ways uh in the future, and I and I appreciate committee member uh Holcomb discussing this. It's near and dear to my heart to be able to do this um for many reasons, not just the fire aspects, but you know, there's there's so much we can do with green waste uh that we're not currently doing. And and so I'm you know, I'm, there's a lot of other programs that are, you know, potentially available out there and including in the future with the move towards curbside pickup which uh, you know, Supervisor Campbell and I have discussed in the past, possible shipping programs and 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 other ways uh to make better better use of, you know, getting rid of these uh, you know, biomass, you know, materials in in the most effective ways, you know, so I I, again, I'm 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 supportive of of what you're saying, uh you know, maybe uh in in the future.
Well, I guess I'm recognizing as well that we have all made the agreement that we will put this on an agenda very soon to discuss and actually work out some details on this. So I'm having faith in that.
Yeah, we talked to, when was that the last meeting that we talked about green waste? So yeah, what uh
Yeah, we're putting it on the agenda as soon as we get a contract.
Yeah.
Doesn't work out.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I just, I'm kind of, it it's kind of great to hear this because w- while each of you are talking, I'm thinking about the contributions that each of you made to um things that have been changed and added to the to the contract to reflect uh I think what the community's needs are. You know, I know, you know, because I think you you talk about your hot topic. Mine was uh the illegal dumping and and the roadside waste. Um I could, that's what I kind of came into it, thinking we we need to have something uh that addresses that. And and I think uh this is a pretty critical uh big, big step in the right direction uh for the um the yardage of of uh the bulk yardage of of waste that that the county and some of these other groups uh like one pile at a time collect. Uh we need to have some way to uh offset the costs of of disposing that. If we can get people who are willing to go out there and and pick up trash and don't volunteer their time and their effort and their energy, we need to do right by them by uh being able to to take the waste. So I see John as a hand up.
Thank you. I I realized that I'd like to ask for further clarification on my previous item, number seven, the treated wood waste. Um it says uh that it will be accepted with no special fee or charge. Um it says uh that it will be accepted with no special fee or charge, but it doesn't mention whether there will be special. Handling, are the customers uh who are required to segregate it because Waste Management is going to. Deal with it separately.
Uh Jim, do you want to speak to the handling on site?
So the best practice is still to segregate it because it still has to be declared and we still have to keep records of who is generating the treated wood waste. But we have clearance now to um, we talked to the landfill in Merced. And we can uh put the treated wood waste into our normal uh. Trash trucks that go down because that's where they dispose of it anyway, into the normal pit. And uh but we just have to be able to provide them with the weight in the vehicle, so we still need to segregate. And uh keep track of. But uh we will be, it's, it's not as much handling as was prior because prior we would have to. Ship directly to the landfill segregated from MSW.
And so the customer who brings the treated wood waste, will he be required to drive across the scale twice and wait separately?
No. And they would, if they keep it segregated, my understanding right now is that they keep it segregated, they can take care of it. All in one shot. I have to, I'd have to verify that though, because this is brand new what we're doing based on the information that we just provided. Was just provided to us.
So what I'm visualizing is that there will be someone at the dump site who to uh. Grab the treated wood waste and separate it as you unload it for your vehicle?
We are loading it into separate containers, I'm worried, we literally just started this, so I just have to figure out where those containers are gonna be placed yet, we're still kind of working through that process.
Wonderful, thank you.
I guess my comment would be uh. If, if you're gonna segregate it uh. And, and I think this is where Committee Member Littori was maybe speaking to is that uh. You segregate that before you hit the scales and get charged for your load, basically, and, and am I correct here, John?
I'd have to look into the process for you on that particular.
Yeah, just, just looking to make it as painless as possible.
Yeah, I agree, the, the reason it has to be sorted. And put separately in that smaller bin so that we can dump it is because we have to keep track of the weight, otherwise it wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, and, and I get that, so it's a, it's a process then that we need to, you guys need to work out, you know.
Yeah, just the refining of the process, correct?
Okay. And, and I think that, that maybe the clarification. That's needed is, there will be a cost for disposal, there just won't be a special fee or charge. So there's still a cost to dispose of it. Does that sound right, Jim?
Uh to my understanding, it is the exact same as the MSW rate now.
Okay, okay, my, my apologies, I was uh not, not clear on that, so thanks for clarifying that too.
Sure.
So um.
Okay.
I, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Like to make a motion to uh recommend approval. Of the Calciera Waste Management. Or Bitted Waste Transfer Station Franchise Agreement, tenure extension.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. So I have a, a motion by uh Committee Member Goldenberg, second by Committee Member Holcomb. Uh I'll go ahead and call for the vote, Jim, would you uh care to read the role?
Sure, Supervisor Campbell.
Aye.
Supervisor Goldenberg.
Aye.
Member Holcomb.
Aye.
Member Littori.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, motion carries four zero one absent. And looking at the agenda here. I believe that concludes our business today. Uh anything else, Jim?
Uh nothing else, just that the next meeting will be October twelve. Um we're not able to have a September meeting due to other um uh high priority issues in our department, so uh we need to focus on some other projects. We will be back on October twelve.
Okay. Sounds good, uh is there any uh time conflicts for anybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll see then, uh actually, there is an item committee reports on there. So I don't want to skip that, is there anything uh committee members would like to report? Nothing to report, uh John. Let me. Okay.
Not in the room.
Okay, alright, so we'll adjourn the meeting at uh one fifty eight, thank you very much, everyone, and have a, a nice day and a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everyone.